Clerk, read the roll, please.
Yeah, I'll read the roll. Yes.
Call the roll.
Counselor DeLaSola. Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Sichetta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
We previously slated the flag. We have a quorum. Clerk, read the first piece. I believe it's the First Order of Business Resolution sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his present to hold a ten-minute public participation period in this formal session.
Make a motion, open public participation.
Second. Motion made second to open a public meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just a minute. Mister Florio gets the sign-in sheet. Excuse me, is there anybody up there who would like to speak on an issue tonight that's before you, before we close this? If so...
Motion made to close public participation.
Motion made second to close the public participation part of this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number two. Item number two is a response by Counsel Michael Marquez, his present accepted donation totaling $10,277.93 from Samusa, Boston to the City of Everett's beautification program.
Subject donation. A little thanks.
Excuse me. Counsel Sichetta.
Yes, I'd like to know what the Samusa, Boston is.
They're the, if I may, Mr. President, they're the folks that do those out, those booths, the bus stops, the shelters at the bus stops.
Well, they do the advertising?
Yeah.
Do we get any of that advertising money? No.
No, I don't know. I don't think so. But they donate ten grand.
Okay, thank you.
Favorable action on the order, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a sign-in sheet.
Okay.
And a letter of thanks.
Okay, motion made second. Roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've accepted a donation and a lot of thanks would be appropriate from this counsel.
Mr. President, I do have a sign-in sheet. Now, the first sign-in is Rick Millie in regards to item 28, but I believe that's a... We don't speak on the...
It's a worksheet. It just gets referred.
This only gets referred.
Well, if you'd like to...
I just want Mister Rick Millie to understand that there was no speaking on this because it's... Maintenance sheets don't get, they only get referred. We don't speak on...
I think that they're also up here for the water. They're also up here for a few things.
Okay, but that's what's on the list. So, I make a motion to take item 28 and refer it to the respective departments.
Motion made to take...
On the order. Can we have these read?
No.
We'll start again here. The motion is, on the motion, Counsel Simonelli, would you like to speak?
Just to have them read, the worksheet.
Would you like to...
Counsel Green, please. Counsel, I need a maintenance request. First is sponsored by Counsel Simonelli, Rich DeLaSola sent the signed petition to Napolitano sidewalks in front of Covenant School located 20 Nichols Street, be repaired. Item two, Counsel Simonelli, the Villarave and Winslow Street be repaid for obvious reasons. Item three, Counsel Simonelli, shoot library needs flashing lights from Stevenson after the under Jersey barriers for pedestrian motor safety. Item four is Counsel Simonelli, the two tree stumps be removed at Fort Dern Street. Item two, Counsel Simonelli, the trash boughs be placed on arch side of Main Street from Locust to Forest. Item two, Counsel Simonelli, the graffiti be removed on brick building at 47 Nichols Street. Item two, Counsel Napolitano, city remove all from the city council drop down many cities' website and information about Board of Aldermen, common council to avoid confusion. Native, Counsel McKinnon, repair yellow electrical sign pole signal hanging over, looks like it'll fall left side in the corner of Union and Ferry Street.
Thank you.
It's before you.
Respect the departments, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made second, refer it to respective departments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Florio, next on the list there.
I have a motion to take items 13, 14, 23, and 25 collectively. And Jay, some of the departments here.
We, 13, 14...
23 and 25.
Could you reserve?
Excuse me, what do you want to do?
One at a time.
Yeah, why don't we just take one at a time?
Yeah.
So, the first question, clerk, read item 13, please.
Item 13.
Spend the rolls and take item 13.
Is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his present, public hearing on an order to submit the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2015. Public hearing has been held, the matter is not before the counsel, Mr. President.
Okay.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Are there any questions?
Do we have to accept a report?
This was the public hearing report, correct?
Public hearing report, yes.
Is there any questions of the counsel on this before we do it?
Do you have any questions for anybody? Mister Biscay, Jay, anybody? Counsel Capone? Could we have them, some of them up before us, please, on the two chairs? Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you.
With the capital improvement, did I read in there that there was going to be some improvements
made to Sacramone and Florence Street? Is that budgeted in there?
Yeah, you, the Sacramone is going to have a snack shack that's part of a grant fund that we've offered $50,000, and that was in there, but we're also doing a, sorry, we're also doing a study of that park. We transferred some funds earlier this year to get a design study. Once we get that designed, then there'll be some appropriation for the renovation.
And how about Florence Street? Is there something, I thought I read somewhere...
Yeah, Florence Street is a park that's being done through some community development block grant money as well.
Okay, is there anything in the capital improvement for that or except for that?
You guys, we had a $360,000 design appropriation for, I believe, a seven-acre park, and it only came in at $100,000. So, we transferred $200,000 to do designs of those other two parks, and then we'll figure out what the costs are going to be and then come in for some supplemental appropriations.
Okay, so, in the capital improvement plan that we have, there's nothing in there about Florence Street? That's something entirely different or no?
Yeah, it's entirely different.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes. Are we here to discuss each and every item, amend them, or are we just approving this whole thing at this time?
May I?
Let me read something right here. It's part of our, each amendment must be voted separately, that any increase in the capital improvements program as submitted must clearly identify the method of financing proposed accomplish such increase. So, I mean, I believe that you go through these pieces, and if you don't like it, you vote on each individual piece. That's what I make out of it, Mike.
In fact, Ken, you can vote on the entire plan as a whole and vote yes. If you wish to make amendments, then you go through each one. Any amendment reducing the amount...
Yes.
You reduce it. If it's any amendment that increases the amount, then you must find out, you must find a method of financing that increase.
Counsel McKinnon.
Are you done? Counsel Sichetta.
I would like to make amendment to eliminate the $350,000 for the service, what was it in the high school, reuse of the high school. I don't believe we should spend $350,000 just for a study. Second motion.
On that, our motion. Mr. President?
Yes.
In regards to the $350,000 of the reuse of the old high school, I think it's desperately needed, but besides that, I would like to know what they're going to do with City Hall and how much revenues we would bring in, that if we were going to do the reuse committee of the high school, how much it would cost us to go out to bond, what would cover this bond? I would want it done together, knowing that we're going to get enough money to cover that bond.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yeah, haven't we already done studies on this before, prior to this? Has there been studies before?
We've done separate studies, different studies, and...
How many?
We've done three studies, like we talked about in the original plan. One was a study of the building, in, of all of our municipal buildings, the RFP Wall study, which we think we gave you all a copy of, that is asking about the old high school plan. We had, the second study we did was to help us put the specifications to go out to bid. So, that wasn't really a study of the use of it, but more of how we could have the best RFP process. So, they helped us with the bidding process. The other one was, was, we had a consultant come in and talk to us about parking and what type of parking we could put into there and whether or not we could fit parking underneath. That was the other study that I think you're thinking of, the third study.
I knew there was a number of studies, I didn't know how many...
This one's not so much...
How much were they actually, how much was the cost per study?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. The most recent study, the one that we did for the specifications, the bid process, was $20,000.
Twenty, okay.
Yeah, but this one will be presenting, this isn't a study, this is design, construction documents. So, this will give us construction documents to put out to bid so that we can bid the project. So, this isn't a, do we want to move City Hall, 911, in the, I mean, the police department and the rec to the old high school. This is, please produce construction documents so that we can do that. So, we're not talking about feasibility anymore, we're not talking about where do we want to go. We're making determinations as where we want to go. We want to move these buildings because we think it'll be the best use of our space and time to there. As far as this building goes, the thought is that this may be a good fire station spot eventually, and then we would sell off Central Fire because it's a good spot in, right in the square for maybe a business or other use. This also could potentially be used for parking. If you remember correctly, 10, 15 years ago, there was a study that was done that put a parking lot behind this building, and that's something that has been discussed as well. As far as the police station and the rec goes, the thought is that that would be a good spot for a school, it's directly across from the old high school, the new high school. And in addition, the Caverian School is the school that's seen the most overcrowding, and that would serve that area best. So, that's our thought process this time. In addition, the thought is that there will be some space left in the old high school as well, that we could condo and try to go through an RFP process to put in some retail space or other offices, like community space. You know, we often see RFPs for state uses or RFPs for nonprofits that are looking for space, or doctors' offices, or any of those things. So, I think that that's the thought, is that we may be able to take, if City Hall only needs one floor, and the rec is going to go in the wellness center, and the police station needs, you know, half of a floor, or whatever they would need, then we could take those other floors and use those for another use. That would bring in income for the city.
And that $350,000 would cover that study?
Yes, construction docs. We would have full construction documents that we would be able to put out to bid to actually construct this municipal site.
Thank you.
Counsel Napolitano.
Do we have a rough idea of what, of what type of cost magnitude we're looking at over what period of time?
Let me have Jamie come up and answer that, I think you're more...
The reason I ask that is I know that this was also explored six years ago, and it wasn't considered feasible because there was no grants, there was no means of being able to subsidize the costs. I believe we were talking about 60 million at that time. So, I mean, really, what are we looking at for costs to take this building that the city council 15 years ago determined was not a viable building, and now, after it's been sitting, determine that it is a viable building, and how are we going to cover the renovations and over what period of time? How is this going to be paid for?
The first part of that question is, what is the anticipated cost? Typically, when you put together a design proposal, it's about five to 10% of the overall budget for the overall project. So, taking that into account, it might be a 30, 35, $40 million project. Ultimately, the design documents will give us an idea of what that cost will be, and the design process will allow us to value engineer or look at the various aspects of construction. Then, that can also go into defining what the cost would be. Melissa mentioned the idea that we might have some flex space. How much do we build out that flex space? Do we build it out for offices, or do we leave it as a shell and let future tenants build it out as part of their lease agreement with the city, should we go that route? That all goes into what the cost will be for the project overall. So, we have some flexibility there. The design study that I believe you referenced from several years ago, I apologize, it's a little bit before my time, but from what I recall from that study, it was to do a very large-scale, comprehensive municipal complex, bringing together lots of different offices in the city into the one location, and that's why I think part of the cost was so expensive. This is a much different scale. We're not looking at a full-on municipal complex. It is a municipal complex, but the idea is to use the space in the City Hall building in a cost-effective way. You know, it wouldn't be too costly to renovate a portion for City Hall, it wouldn't be too costly to renovate a portion for the rec center, so hopefully that'll bring the cost down a little bit. The payment of that for the, for the project, that's to be determined. I think the idea would be to maybe use city bonding, maybe go after some other great resources at that time, but ultimately, that's to be determined at this time.
My only, my concerns there is that as we continue to look at these projects, we always seem to be leaning back toward bonding or borrowing. And, you know, having been in the lending industry, you can only continue to lend so much before future generations collapse on that debt, and that's where my concerns lie. Okay, so, how much can we sustain and feasibly be able to pay back without creating additional tax burden on the residents and taxpayers?
Completely understandable and fortunate, we have a very talented, numbers person who can help us understand and make sure that we don't have those issues.
I'll just also add that, any, at this present time, you've had all-time bond rates to be at, they're lowest, so if you're contemplating a capital project this size, we are in the prime time to sell bonds, and we're talking 2% on 20-year bonds we've got the last two times we sold, so certainly an opportune time to sell bonds for these types of projects this magnitude.
And there are some potentially revenue-generating opportunities here, too. So, for example, if this property becomes available and it's determined to sell this property, that can go, and the proceeds from that sale can go towards the bond or towards the renovation costs. If this becomes another municipal site, and then it frees up other municipal properties, those can also be sold. Also, the opportunity to, as Melissa mentioned, open up some of the space in the existing high school building for rent, for leases, for opportunities to rent that space to the private enterprise or nonprofits, that's potentially revenue that comes in as well. And we have had interest in medical institutions to rent space in the city, so there is a demand out there to a certain extent. We'd have to explore it a little bit more over the next several months while we do this design process, but I'm sure we can, we can try to make sure that we design it in such a way that we can accommodate the demand.
I myself have no problem with the spirit of that. It's just that traditionally, going back to the sale of the Devon School, the sale of, you know, the building of the new high school, we have not had the greatest luck turning over our older properties and being able to get a reasonable return on that. I'm not questioning the ability, your ability, the city's ability to do that in this go-around, but you can understand why some of us will be a little gun-shy. We've seen this occur before, and though the, you know, we're told that the monies will be going to pay for, you know, to help reimburse other projects, that money sometimes always ends up going somewhere else, and there's always another project. And eventually, you know, again, trying to catch up on debt, almost is like chasing a carrot. And that's, again, is what I'm hearing, is concerns of a lot of people in the, in the community. It's my concerns, and I'm sure there's some of my colleagues as well. So, I just want to put that out there. I'm not opposing it, but I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not taking on more than we can handle. And as much as I've had confidence in the, in this area, I've heard this in other areas where I had equal confidence, and the results didn't quite pan out the way we expected. And I just want to make sure that we're taking a good, hard look before we say that we could get X amount of money for the old City Hall here, when we're going into a building that's older and potentially has more issues. Police, you know, alone, you know, is going to require a more extensive wiring than that building currently inhabits, just to be able to supply the communication system that they're going to need to warrant. We just in discussion about potentially moving one of the fire departments in there. Now, you're talking about an entirely different issue, talking about the building be able to handle the, you know, large-scale vehicles and the safety with fire that goes along with those. So, I've just had some concerns. I just want to make sure that we're pushing this all the way through.
Understood.
Thank you. One last question, though. What is our current bond rating?
Double eight, three.
Double eight, three. Thank you.
If I, if I may, just one quick question. I'll probably vote for that appropriation tonight, and the only reason I'm going to do it, I want to see the staggering amount that comes up to renovate that building, to build a school, to renovate this, and I think it'll be hot-stopping. I think it'll be $100, $150 million that we're going to be out borrowing. And I can, I look at it and I see it. We're increasing the size of government, we're not reducing commercial rates, no way. It's, it doesn't, I'm just trying to feel what direction we're heading in. We're seeing, we're accommodating our government, but we're not doing anything for the city. And we're building schools, which I guess we need, but we're not doing anything to prevent the overflow of people here. So, shame on us. So, that $50 million, I mean, a couple of years ago, we were getting 70, 80%. I don't know if those programs are still out there, but if we have to foot the bill on it, it's a lot of money. And to renovate that monster up there, for what you want to do, as Counsel Napolitano said, it's staggering. I mean, that's a deal that shouldn't go out to a private person. Even this building, to put a fire station here, it's a big building, it's going to be a very big fire station. So, we're going to be spending three and a half million to renovate one, and in the long run, we want to put it here. I'll put, combine that with Central, because you won't need two of them. So, I'm trying to feel what direction we're going here. I mean, I like the idea we're working low abroad when we're doing something, but we shouldn't be spending a lot of money on crazy stuff. And that's, that's, you build schools and you renovate that high school up there, four acres of building, that's a lot of money. I mean, that, that's the way I'm looking at it. I mean, I want, I don't even want to appropriate the money, but I want to appropriate the money, see what it comes back as. To go tear down our buildings, tear down our rec center, tear down the, the 1980, it's about a 40-year-old building now, a police station, take it all out of there, put another school there, and you're going to have four schools in that one triangle from, not triangle from that one quadrant, from Broadway to Ferry Street. It's going to be staggering the amount of traffic that's there. And that's my concern being, remember, that's my ward, and, you know, I'm still trying to get over what they did to Webster School. Traffic gets there every day. The poor people who live there, half of them moved out because of it. I don't want to see everybody abandon ship in the rest of Ward Three, and that's my concern. Thank you. Counsel Florio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, this $350,000 is coming from free cash, right? To do the study.
That's what's proposed.
That's what's proposed, okay. If we go forward with a project like this, how long would it take to, from start to finish? First of all, you'd have to come in front of us to get approval, because you can't build anything without the approval.
Right, I think the idea is to get a plan of what it's going to cost, and then we have to say, this is worth going forward with, so we can't, we can't start anywhere unless we have...
A plan. So, once you get this plan, and you, you have to come in front of us to say, okay, we want to go forward with this, it's going to, we have to go out to bond, whatever the amount is. What bonds do we have? Like, I'm trying to figure out the timeframe to see what bonds we will be paying off if, so we're not borrowing more and more bonds, because some of the schools are going to be paid off at a certain time, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a great deal of the debt service drops off after 2020, so, again, it's, it's not going to be a cheap endeavor, for sure, but as far as bonding rates, you got the lowest rates right now. You were bonding at five or six percent, maybe five, six years ago, and now you're down to 2%. So, if you're really going to consider doing anything with these buildings, and I think most people know that, something needs to be done with the aging buildings, now's the time. We have a big high school up there, city-owned land, I mean, in one respect, you want to sell it, but then we don't have any land, so why don't we look at it as, we should use that property, city-owned, and repurpose it. Even the schools now, at the MSBA, they're not looking for tear downs, they're looking more favorable about using existing buildings and remodeling them, so that's the starting point. Looking to consolidate some city operations, put in that high school, and then, and then talk about step two with regard to this building and those buildings down there. So, we have to start somewhere, counsel, and we think we have a good plan.
I don't have an issue with that. I had actually recommended that 10 years ago, when, when Counsel Hanlon was the mayor at that time. So, that was the recommendation, that we moved everything to the high school. But the point I'm trying to make is, we do have to make it affordable. We have to make sure that, I understand it's only 2%. I want to know what schools we start paying, how much comes off, and how much we're going to add on.
Well, most of the debt projections I do are based upon stuff in the current, so I haven't proposed what the debt service would be for something that may or may not happen yet, but for sure, once we get a plan and it's something that we want to go forward with, I would lay out the financial impact and show you how, I mean, my job is basically to tell you guys whether it is or isn't affordable, just through the mayor, so that information would soon follow once we get an idea of what the study looked like and what the cost would be.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we had Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to either one of you gentlemen. As far as that $350,000, I think we had enough of studies, you know? This money could be way too much money. This money could be well-spent for, never think of the elderly, the veterans, low-income, and homeless people. I mean, this is, this much is just too much. We had enough studies, let's get rid of it and put that money towards the people, because we are the people, and we want, we want to, we want to do what the people want us to do. We don't want to be spending this kind of money. Thank you.
If I could just quickly note, this is not a study, though? This is for the design of the building?
I don't want the design, no more.
Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question I think I've been strutting around, and you mentioned it also. The debt plan, you said, if, once we get the, we know what we're going to do, we'll be able to come up with a debt plan. Can you come up with one now without anything else being added on to it, what we, where we stand currently today?
Oh, you have it. I mean, we have that scheduled right now for existing debt. I can't give you a proposed cost of something, I have no idea what it's going to cost.
I'm talking about what we have now.
Oh, yeah.
You have that?
Yeah, it will be, it'll come with, with your budget when we submit it. I have the projected cost of debt being proposed in this for fiscal year 15, and when we submit you the operating budget, like last year, you'll have all of the debt service schedules right in there. I have a copy right here, but it's not part of this. I only put the proposed debt in here, but when you get the operating budget, you'll have the total debt schedule for the city in that budget.
Could I get a copy of that?
No.
Right, not this moment, but could I?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, I put it in the budget, but I'm happy to give you a copy before that if you want to look at it.
Thank you.
Councilor McKinnon.
On our bond, on our bond rating now, what are we getting now? 2% you said?
The last two times we sold bonds, we got, I think, 2.2% and 2.4% on average 20-year bond notes, which is probably as good as you've ever seen.
And how much is in free cash right now, currently?
We had $5.3 million. I believe we appropriated some to the OFAB liability trust and to one other account, so I believe we got about $4 million. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay. And actually, let me see. Now, before, I remember when we actually went through this, it was like six years ago, we actually went through this with the old high school, and we were looking into it and how we were going to utilize it and how we were going to do things with it up there, whether it was going to be an elderly center, or whether it was going to be a school, or whatever. At that point in time, it was too costly to actually go in and renovate it. That's what was told, you know, to all of us before of the school, for a school. What do you feel now, in your opinion, in your personal opinions and your professional opinion, what would the cost of it being renovated now?
It's very hard for me to give you that answer without some kind of design and put it out to bid and get what the costs are. If it comes in at $7 million, it's probably very affordable. If it comes in at $25 million, well, I have to see what that debt service would look like and build a schedule based upon what I think the rates would be, so. I think it's the most opportune time to take care of capital needs right now with the rates as they are, but I don't know exactly what the cost of this is going to be until we get $350,000, make a design, and then we'll get an idea of what the costs are. And then subsequent to that, I'll come back before you with a plan to proceed if it's feasible after we get the study, but it's hard for me to say right now. I wouldn't want to be locked into a, yeah, we can do it, because I don't, I don't know what I'm talking about just yet.
Okay. And then my last question would be, right now, it's 2014. We're asking for this money now. Are we going to be coming back in 2015 asking for more money for this project?
Well, this is for the design, so if the design comes out and it looks affordable, then we'll certainly have to come before you for a bond authorization for a set amount of money to proceed accordingly.
And right now, we don't even have, we don't have no estimates at all?
Well, that's what the 350 will give us. It'll give us the opportunity to go out and get an estimate on what it will cost.
Thank you very much.
And if that exceeds it, they'll come back for more money. Councilor Sichetta, this will be the last question, is this okay?
I made the motion to amend this, to reduce this to zero. Another thing I want to bring up, in this capital improvement plan, we have $165,000 just to repair the roof on this building. We also repaired the air conditioning in this building. We repaired that high school, and now we're going to spend $350,000 to study what we could do with it. I say, let's save the money, use it much better, and I'd like to vote on this, please.
If I may, Council, just one clarification. We did authorize money to repair this roof. We haven't spent any money to repair it yet, because we are, that's been authorized, but we haven't expended the money yet, so that money could be, that money could be repurposed. If the plan is to move from here, we could repurpose that money. We have not expended that money yet.
Councilor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very brief. I've been one of the proponents of not ever selling the high school. We have, you know, school populations that are, that are increasing tremendously, you know, like they're talking about, the Kavarian School is already, I had the figures, 560 students. We got 700 in there right now. We got to do something with the high school. Now, they've come up with a proposal. They're not professional engineers or architects, these two gentlemen, and I respect their opinion. So you've got, you've got to start somewhere by spending money, by having professional engineers come in now with the plan that they're asking for, so they can tell us afterwards, what, is this feasible or not? That's what they're looking for. Now, to sit here and say, you know, I don't want to spend any of that money on that, I don't think that's right. I don't, because that building has been sitting there. It's costing us so much money a year, 250 to a half a million dollars a year. Absolutely spend the money and find out just what the cost is to bring City Hall and all these other businesses in there, and then we'll know. But to speculate right now without having, spending that money is not, is not the right way to go. I know it's a lot of money, but we've got to start somewhere for the feasibility of using that, that property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion.
Let's excuse Abbot Fiskay and Abbot Starickson to start. And the motion is to eliminate $350,000 for the study for the reuse of the high school.
Motion made, and we have a second on that. Motion made, second, to eliminate the $350,000 for the planning and design on the old high school. That'll be a roll call vote.
No.
Councilor Florio.
No.
Councilor Hanlon.
No.
Councilor McGonigal.
No.
Councilor McKinnon.
No.
Councilor Paul Tannen.
No.
Councilor Sichetta.
Yes.
Councilor Sonny.
No.
Councilor Semenelli.
Yes.
Councilor Marquez.
No.
Two yeas, eight nays, Mr. President. Yeas, that will stay in the budget. Do we have anything else before us, reading everything, Councilor?
I have a question on the.
McKinnon.
Thank you. I have a question on Sacramonie Park. If we could have someone come up that was handling, Jamie, thanks. You're already there, thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Sure.
On that money that was earmarked. It was earmarked from Senator Diderminico. I know that.
The $50,000?
$50,000.
Yes.
Okay. That was a grant. Are we matching that grant? Is that what's going on?
There's no requirement for a match, but we're bidding the project now. We had to take a different approach, because, as Melissa mentioned earlier, the community build project could not accommodate the ADA compliance requirements that we had to do in renovating the existing facility, so what we need to do is actually bid the construction of a new facility. Once we know more about what that construction cost will be, there might be a question as to how much more additional dollars above that $50,000 will need to be put towards the project.
I know, I know now that there is.
We didn't have a cost estimate, though. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Okay, sorry. I know now that there is $50,000. The senator came up.
Correct.
He actually said there is $50,000.
We have it in our coffers. We got the check about a month ago.
All right.
So we have an account set up.
And now there's going to be what, from what I'm understanding, another additional $50,000?
No.
Well, it's.
Right now, we have the $50,000, and what we need to do is bid the project. Before, we were trying to do a community build and use the $50,000 as part of that project, but we can't do that anymore.
That was just going to be for repairs of the facility.
It was going to be for renovations and repairs, but we were going to have a lot of the materials bought with the $50,000, but the labor donated. That's the community build. We can't do what we wanted to do with that community build process anymore, so what we need to do is bid the entire construction, and once we know what the cost will be of that, we'll know how much above the $50,000 we'll need for the project.
Not to interrupt, but so that building will be torn down, and there'll be a new one constructed?
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay. Is that, is that the truth of the matter, or?
That's the extent of it, yeah.
Okay.
We tried to renovate it, but we can't.
Yeah.
Now we need to bid out the demolition and reconstruction of the new building.
And the $50,000 that was coming from, earmarked from the senator's office to here, or from the state to here, I should say, that's being utilized for what?
It will be utilized for the construction, the demolition construction. We're putting all of it towards the project. That's being bid right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted to clear that up, because I've seen it again, and I didn't understand why it was there again.
Yeah, we did, we had to take a different approach than we initially thought, so that's why.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Sonny.
Thank you. Out of the whole capital improvement project, what's the impact to the taxes to the taxpayers? What would it actually cost? You know, a couple of dollars more, is it going to go up a lot for the taxpayers? Have you figured it out?
Well, it'd be a little premature for me to give you, it's going to cost four cents on the residential rate. It's a little early. I do have, obviously, the stuff that we're proposing to use free cash for, it would essentially cost them nothing. It's money that we have on hand, and just to go back to Councilor Paul Tannen's question, I did get handed, we have $3.385 million of free cash available. There is a council order before you for $1.425 million to fund part of this. It'll bring us down to about $2 million of free cash. Now, those particular aspects won't cost the taxpayers anything on their tax bill, but with regard to the overall impact on the sixth tab, there is a summary of the debt service, and it gives you a cost of principal and interest payments that are projected for these projects. There's some specific dollar amount, but I can't relate that to what it's going to cost a single-family homeowner or a multifamily homeowner. A little too early for that now.
Okay. The other question is, if we vote on the capital improvement, you still have to come in front of us for each item, or is that automatically done, and you can move forward with everything?
Well, my hope, last year, and it continues to be this year, is that when we submit the capital plan, I'm hoping that it gets accepted, and when it gets accepted, either as submitted or as amended, I would hope that I could then bring forward the bond orders to get the perfunctory vote. I'm hoping that you hash out what you do or don't like before that. I know I did try to put a free cash request in with this capital plan to make it more efficient. I can see now that kind of got backed up, because you hadn't really had the chance to go through this plan, but to the extent that the capital items that are funded by free cash are approved by this body, it would be great to have you vote on the free cash appropriation. That's on the list tonight, and then we can give the departments the authority to go ahead and start planning for those particular things. Most of the free cash stuff is equipment-related. It's not so much the high-ticket items like the fire station, et cetera, which requires a bond, and we require a two-thirds vote by this body, but my idea is to submit this, have you vet through it, and either accept it or amend it, and then once you've done either or, I will then present to you the orders that are needed to execute this.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just what you said, so the 1.3 appropriate, that'd be 1.3 for that particular order for the funding sources, right?
All those items that are funded with free cash, if you appropriate that money tonight, we can get going on all those.
The 4.2 million granted from grants, and what's the other financial sources?
The bond order.
The bond order?
Yeah, and there's also, some of it's funded through the budget process itself, so I'll have a line item in the police budget, say, for cruises. The idea here is to bring it to your attention as part of capital, because it's classified as a capital item, but then it'll be an appropriation in the budget itself, so hopefully, those particular items in the budget, you won't have too many questions on.
See, our bond authorization would be about $9 million you'd be looking for.
Exactly. It's 8.625 million.
Yep, and that goes out over 10 years?
It depends on the project. The Mass General is, a construction of a building is longer. A piece of equipment might be short, a infrastructure.
I was trying to give an estimate to Councilor Sonny, how you could figure it out a little bit by yourself, if we knew the years on it, you know, it's all.
Yeah, essentially, the way the project's laid out, it'd cost about $1 million a year for the next five years, and then it starts to taper down, because some of these projects, like the renovation of Day Park, 675, that's a five-year amortization. You have infrastructure, streets and sidewalks, that's a 10-year amortization. You have, a building would be a 20-year amortization, so depending on what the project is, but as a whole, it starts off as a million, and it'll start to fade down.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more questions up there? Excuse me, customary thanks, unless there's something else for them. Does anybody else have any other issues? No, thank you. The matters before you, who do we have? Favorable action on the order, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
What do we have? Motion made, second, for favorable action, that'll be a roll call vote. Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Florio.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor McGonigal.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor Paul Tannen.
Yes.
Councilor Sichetta.
Yes.
Councilor Sonny.
Yes.
Councilor Semenelli.
Yes.
Councilor Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. The piece has passed.
Suspend the rules, take item number 14.
Motion made, second, to suspend the rules and take item number 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item 14.
Item number 14 is a public hearing report on the FY 2015 Water, Salt, Enterprise. The public hearing was held. No one spoke in favor, no one opposed. The matter is now before the council, Mr. President.
Mr. Marquardt, if you could please, Mr. Fiskay.
I'm sorry.
Do we have any issues on the council regarding this fund? Councilor Paul Tannen.
Thank you. All right, and I understand the, my understanding of the enterprise fund is that the purpose of it is to become a self-sufficient, efficient entity to be able to take the monies coming in to offset the expense. Obviously, we're coming up short. How much off are we, are we projected on, based on what we're going to be taking in and what the current budget is for the water enterprise?
For this current year?
For this coming year.
For the proposed budget?
Yes. The, I'm assuming, again, and I think I'm assuming correctly, the breakdown you gave us for the, for the budget is for 2015, correct? Okay, so that's, that's what I'm asking. Well, how much are we projecting to be short, to be short?
We're not projecting to have any shortfall. The rates will fully cover the cost of the budget.
So there'll be no line item in the, in the city budget, municipal budget, for any additional money to be going to the water department?
No, there will not.
And this year, they're going to finish in the black?
Right now, at three-quarters through the year, we're in the black, and our revenues are covering at budget, so we, we should see retained earnings, also known as free cash for the water and salt fund, for the first time in fiscal year '14. I'm a little hesitant to come on camera and say that, but through nine months, we are in the black. Our revenues are over what we projected, and we're not overspending any particular line item, so those two things should make for this to close in the black.
And has any money been transferred into this, this account or this department this fiscal year?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions out there? Councilor Hanlon. Counsel Hamlin?
Just reading this item that I have here, and it says that the total cost is $15,822,866. And it says that $15,261,675 will come from the enterprise fund, and that $561,191 is to be raised and appropriated in the general fund. Is that?
Well, those are indirect costs. So there's basically the offset of the cost of health insurance, the cost of pension, the cost of shared services between the city. So those indirect costs aren't transfers in. It's just, not only will the water and salt enterprise fund cover the direct costs, it'll also cover those indirect costs.
Okay. And I know another question, too. The, how many employees are in the water suicide? Uh, water su- water su-
Currently, currently, we have 10.857 full-time equivalents in fiscal year '15 budget. Request two additional foreman positions to bring it up to 12.857. Full-time equivalent is one full-time.
Okay, I got that, yeah. These gentlemen, these employees, rather, they will be working full-time on this system or nothing else?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse with the customary thanks.
I'd like a quick question. Last week, I noticed my concern was over two things. The amount of overtime that was given in the outside contractors that were doing work. And at one time, I was told that there wasn't anybody qualified to do the work that was done about two weeks ago out in front of Immaculate. Will you be training somebody that'll be, you can't do that? Or is it too complicated?
I'm not, I'm, from what I've been told, the liability to train someone to do, that particular job is extremely dangerous. I have Ernie here, the superintendent, water superintendent. He could probably get into the details as to the exact, you know, I guess, the danger of the, what has to be done. Basically, what they're doing with the insertion valve is that the pressure, the water main pressure is on full, we cannot shut it off. So the water pressure is at full blast, and they're doing an insertion valve while the pressure is at that line. Am I correct? So the chances of a threat are there.
Thank you, Mr. Marquardt. Do we have any other questions?
Excuse with the customary thanks, and favorable action on the order.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marquardt, Ms. Fiskay. Motion made, second for favorable action. Clerk, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Make a motion to file for reconsideration.
Second.
Motion made for reconsideration.
File for reconsideration.
All in favor?
No.
No, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel Palatano.
No.
Counsel Sichetta.
No.
Counsel Sonny.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
Uh, no.
Counsel Marquez.
No.
One yeas, nine nays.
Mr. President, I'd like also to make a motion to file for reconsideration on item number 13.
Motion made, second to move for reconsideration on item 13. All in favor?
No.
Opposed? Excuse me, not a roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
No.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
No.
Counsel McKinnon.
No.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes. Correction, no.
Counsel Sichetta.
No.
Counsel Sonny.
No.
Counsel Simonelli.
No.
Counsel Marquez.
No.
One yeas, nine nays, Mr. President.
Reconsideration has failed.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and take item number 23.
Motion made, second to take item number 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item 23.
Item number 20 is resolution sponsored by Council Steve Simonelli to invite the mayor and mayor's chief staff to this meeting to explain the reason why the City of Everett put out to bid the street sweeping contract.
Ms. Murphy, please.
Ms. Murphy, please. Good evening.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Ms.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you for showing up tonight. This is what I'm just want to know is mostly is the reason why you put out the contract on this?
Yep. We didn't actually go out to bid. What happened was that our sweepers were waiting for parts. So we brought arrow sweeping in for a week, the first week of sweeping, to sweep the streets. Our sweepers are now up and operational, so you shouldn't see any arrow sweepers at all unless we have another problem with our sweepers. So it was only a week-long process that we had a sweeper here. So you should always see our sweepers now.
Okay, there was this, no, you didn't get a year, like a year contract on this?
Nope.
So the contract is over?
We're done. I mean, we have, we can bring them back in. We didn't, we didn't overspend on the bidding process or anything like that, so we could bring them back in if we need to use them. But no, it was only a one-week deal while our sweepers were down.
Oh, that's great. A lot of people know that.
Yep. And everything's up and running now. We were just waiting on parts.
Great. Thank you very much.
Excuse with the customary thanks, and refer back to spots.
Right.
Second, the motion.
Referring to spots.
Motion made to refer back to spots. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And refer back to spots. Clerk read the next.
I would suspend the rules and please take item 25.
Motion made to suspend the rules, take item number 25. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk read item 25.
Item number 25, resolution sponsored by Council John Liam McKinnon to chase a mark on Kevin Noonan appeared this meeting. We'll have to an update on delayed opening of Glendale Park for the season.
Counsel McKinnon?
How are you tonight again, sir?
Busy night.
Oh, yeah. Is there any updates on the openings of this park? I know that I had spoken with Mr. Noonan. I actually left you a couple of messages, and we've been conversing.
We spoke in the hallway.
Yeah, in the hallway, passing. But I know that what he was describing to me was there was something to the effect of city services was going to be taking care of the bases and the mound and the dirt areas, and then subcontract out to the grass. Is there any truth to that matter?
Correct.
Okay. And why is that? Is there a punch list going on now, or is there something?
I've seen it. It's a new project that's, you know, new field, new sod, new drainage, new infrastructure, basically. We do not have the time or the dedicated staff to take care of that field the way it should be taken care of. That's, you know, particularly with mowing and the scarifying and all that. We, they've actually been out there this, last week, excuse me, doing all that as their final punch list to hand it over to us, which will be next Monday.
Is it currently handed over to us now?
There's some final punch items list, or punch items for the final contractors, like some dead trees that need to be taken care of, signage. I know they were out there last week dealing with some drainage issues, scarifying the fields, dealing with like the field stuff. So we're in that phase right now. This week, it'll be ours.
Okay. And will, the appearance of the field, I mean, the park's a beautiful park. The appearance of the field, it seems like it's brownish. Why is, why is that happening? It seems kind of like it's dead.
It's, we're getting out of the winter and into the spring, or the, you're talking about the grass, the field itself?
Yes, the field itself.
After the scarifying, we put down the fertilizers and everything, it'll look
Kick back up.
Look like golf course.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a question. Was there, was there any problems with us taking over the park?
Absolutely not.
So it was just free and clear, and we took it over, and there was no problems?
It, it's a big, you know, it's a big park. It's 2.6 million-dollar, brand-new facility. We didn't want to rush into taking it over and having, you know, a little blip here there and doing worse damage to it.
Yeah, I understand completely. Now, with the company that had put the sod down and the field itself in, do we have any problems with them?
No.
They're handling all the punch lists.
Yeah, they're very open, and the communication with them has been great the whole time.
Okay. And when was the park originally opened to us?
To actually use?
Was it like, because I remember they opened it, I thought they-
The plant, I believe for like residential use, to use the park with the totla and all that, was open when we got it last fall, or when they finished it last fall. But to actually use the field for games, the intent was to wait as long as possible to have the sod and the field to establish themselves. Homecoming day.
Homecoming day.
Okay. In the fall, sorry.
All right, so we can anticipate like the baseball team, girls softball.
Correct.
Coming in.
We've already, they're already scheduled for Monday. Their first game will be Monday.
I received many calls, as I described to you in the hallway, so that's why I was asking you about it. So I want to thank you.
Understandable.
And, you know, I hope it comes out greener than green.
It will be.
Counsel Sichetta.
Thank you.
Same question, almost as Counsel McKinnon. I've been down the park for a couple of times. The green grass all around the park is fine. The sod is completely brown, not a bit of green. You say that all that's going to take is fertilizer?
Absolutely. That's why we're waiting so long for, I wouldn't say so long, but that's why we purposely did not have any activity on that field during the late winter, early part of the spring is because that, the brand-new sod is delicate, and it's in a stage where it needs to establish itself before activity is put on.
Counsel McGonigal.
Jay, just one question on that issue. The contractor themselves, what's their, what's their guarantee? Are they liable for that for a year?
One year.
One year? Okay. So when they turn it over to us in November, they have to guarantee until this November?
It's one year from the time that it's been handed over to us. So this week, one year from this week.
This week. So, okay. Great.
Counsel Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I'm sorry, the maintenance on the park, you said we're going to have a contract for maintenance on the park?
We're going out to bid for that, yes.
Okay. And is there any limitation as to who can use the park? Let me, let me rephrase that. Who is going to use the park?
Mostly the schools for the softball, baseball.
So there'll be like nobody running in there with soccer or football or anything like that?
No.
Okay. My reason to come up with this question is that we had at one time only one person cutting the grass in that field, taking care of it, turning on the sprinkler systems and so forth. And the only time he needed help was in the beginning of the season, like now, and at the end of the season to close things up and so on and so forth. Do you know what this maintenance contract is going to cost us?
Yeah, it's, it could range 20 grand. It's out the bid right now. I don't know what the contractor is going to-
20 grand doesn't sound bad.
I, I don't know what, don't comment on that. I don't know what it's going to be.
Because I think what we're recovering now is, you know, one person, maybe one and a quarter persons for the year, and cost of maintenance and so forth.
I don't anticipate someone being on this field every day, eight hours a day. It's, it's going to be periodic, you know, once a week maintenance or, you know, twice a week maintenance.
Okay. I mean, we haven't had someone draw lines?
We can do that.
Okay, so we'll do that ourselves? So we're still going to be taking care of some of that park?
In the, in the mounds and the base lines and stuff like that.
Okay. I'd be interested to know what the contract is.
I will, I'll let you know.
When you get it. Thank you.
Mr. Marquardt, before you leave, that contract also, that include the flowers? Or will we be planting the flowers on the exterior of it?
Oh, well, we're doing the flowers.
There's extensive flowers, I noticed that. I know if that would be part of it. And the maintenance would be done by us? The barrels would be done by us?
The barrels, yes.
All right, so just, we're just going to pay someone to cut the lawn?
Basically, taking care of the irrigation system, the fields, the drainage, all that. Make sure everything is, you know, the sprinkler heads, up until we're comfortable enough where we can take over ourselves.
All right, thank you. Counsel Simonelli.
I just want to quickly, I just want to thank you. I think you did a great job in the park. It's really nice. I think the people are really proud of that park, and they can use it very, for everybody there. I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you.
It'll be green.
Hopefully. Green is St. Patty's Day. Thanks. There was a question that was asked of me, and I didn't have the answer to it, but they said something of sinkholes in the outfield and stuff like that. Was there any knowledge of that?
They were out there last week. They took care of that.
That's all set? Okay. So no more sinkholes. Thank you very much.
Any more questions?
Excuse with the customary thanks.
Thank you very much.
For items 5 back to spots.
Motion made, second to refer item number 25 back to spots. All in favor?
Thank you for appearing, sir.
All in favor? Thank you.
I suspend the rules, item 9 and 10.
Motion made to suspend the rules and take items 9 and 10. All in favor? Opposed? Clerk read items 9 and 10.
Item number 9 is petition for an open-air parking license from AG Quealy Towing Incorporated, 26 Gavi. Number 10 is an order for an open-air parking license from AG Quealy Towing at 54. Robin, all paperwork is in order.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, second. Motion made for favorable action for item 9 and 10. Clerk.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delissola. Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sonny.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
No, petitions haven't been granted. Excuse me? Do we talk? Yes.
Do we want to see the license?
No.
No, they're old or, they're renewals.
They're renewals.
Here's passes.
So I suspend the rules and take item number 19.
Second, the motion. Motion made to suspend the rules, take item number 19. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Take item number 19?
Yeah, it's, I need to, it's supposed to be in there.
Item number 19, order sponsored by Council Peter Anna Palatano, revised ordinance to City of Everett, amended by adding a section to be numbered 7-6 with said section to transfer funds. There are recommendations for favorable action on section 7-6 as amended and section 7-7.
Motion for favorable action as amended.
Second. Motion made, second for favorable action. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.[1435.75]
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Make a motion to take items number 11, please.
Item number 11 is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president petition for grades at 30 Norwood Street.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Yes.
Second.
Motion made second petition for...
Grades at 30 Norwood Street.
Mr. President?
On the motion.
On the motion? Just wondering, are we going back on the, this is the grades, this is the, we call it the burglar, the big grades, right? We're talking here? Burgly grades that come down?
Burgly grades with a visibility, so they could see, and I guess they've approved by the fire department.
These are the big grades you push down for, nobody will break in.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Motion made and second, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel DePolatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Good luck. Motion made and second, take item number 20. All in favor? All opposed. Clerk read item 20.
Item number 20 is to transfer the amount of $1,345,000 from budgetary fund balance to the listed capital improvement plan accounts.
Favorable action on the order.
First, let's spend the rule.
Suspend rule 20, is it?
13.
13.
Excuse me?
Suspend rule 13?
Yep. Motion made second to suspend rule 13. All in favor? All opposed. None?
Favorable action on the order.
Second the motion.
Motion made second for favorable order. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon? Counsel Polatano? Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel McKinnon?
No, it was me.
No, but I didn't hear Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Counsel McKinnon? Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
File for reconsideration?
Second.
Motion made and second move for reconsideration.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
No.
Counsel Sani?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Counsel Marquez?
No.
Reconsideration.
Two yeas, eight nays, Mr. President.
Reconsideration has failed. Motion made and second to spend the rules and take item number seven. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president, revise chapter 11, section 21A, of the revised and consolidated ordinance that the City of Everett, as amended, further meant of striking out the section and inserting a new one in place thereof.
Favorable action on the order?
Second.
We have, I need someone to explain what this is, please.
Can someone stand up and explain what this is for?
Have a communication, if you'd like?
Is this from the...
No, it's from the mayor.
Can we read that, please?
Attached, please find, in ordinance amending the current amounts of longevity for non-union city employees. Union employees and school department employees have their own longevity rules and regulations regarding longevity. This ordinance has not been amended in recent years, and current members lag behind union contracts and other longevity payments. Thank you for consideration of this matter, respectfully submitted, College of Maria, Junior Mayor.
Favorable action?
Second.
Motion made, second favorable action. All in favor? Roll call.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Chapter 21 is amended.
The sign-in sheet is all done, so we'd like to revert back to the regular order of business.
Motion made for the clerk to read the...
Item number three, Mr. President, is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president to accept a donation of $100 from Everett Emblem Club to the Office of Human Services Emergency Services Program.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Letter of thanks.
Motion made to accept the donation of $100. Roll call.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
I know I put all noes instead of yes.
I did. We take items four and five collectively?
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Four, five, and six?
Motion made and accept...
Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion made to take items four and five collectively.
Item number four is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president to accept donation $200 from Jack McGrath to the Office of Human Services Emergency Services Program. And number five is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president to accept a donation totaling $200 from Joseph King to the City of Everett Safe by a donation account.
Mr. President, on the order, on number five, please, could I just let everybody know that Joe King is recovering from the hospital. I think he's home now. He's got a little bout of pneumonia. I just wanted people to know our best wishes and all our hearts and hearts and love go out to him.
You.
Accept the donations and a letter of thanks?
Second the motion.
Motion made to accept the donations, and also, I forgot to send a letter of thanks on item number three, too, so I hate to not have that. Motion made to accept donations, send a letter of thanks to these two donors.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani? Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. Item number six. Item number six is an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez's president to accept and consider the low Broadway Urban Renewal Plan and refer to the public hearing to be held on April 28 at 6:00 PM.
Accept the plan and...
Refer.
Refer to the public hearing on April 28 at 6:00 PM.
Motion made second to accept the plan and refer to the, the urban renewal plan, refer to public hearing on April 28. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
It's an order.
No, you're referring though.
You're referring to him. You're not saying, yes, right.
Item number eight, Mr. President, is petition for a junk deal and renewal application from HHM Metals Incorporated, 337 Second Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action?
Second.
Motion made, second favorable action. Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Junk deal, renewal applications have been approved.
Item number 12 is communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Commissioner Banks approving the pawnbroker ordinance and interest rates.
Accept the communication, place on file.
Ms. Chairman?
On the motion?
On the motion. Can we ask the city solicitor to come up?
Yes. Which item was it? Was it item 12?
12.
Communication?
14.
Reason I ask you to come up is that fully almost a third of the city council this year was not members of the city government last year when this went through. Can you give us some clarification what the purpose of this was?
12A?
Please.
It's in the...
No, no, no. The, 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 the letter from the commissioner of banks, proven the pawnbroker ordinance.
Yeah, I think that was through the city clerk. My office was involved.
Once we...
The letter we got said it was approved by the Board of Alderman or the common council.
Yes. Once, once we created a pawnbroker's ordinance and corresponding zoning, which put them in a certain area, you need to have the pawnbroker ordinance and your interest rate approved by the division of banks before anything else can be done. And what, you send it to them, and we went with a 3% flat rate per month, and, and that was approved by them.
That's the amount that the pawnbroker themselves can charge the person for it?
Yes.
None of that's coming back to the city?
Nothing of that comes back to us, no.
Right, and I understand it now. Thank you.
Okay.
The customer's...
Do I also ask a question to the clerk? Because like it says, why do we need pawnbrokers in the City of Everett?
I believe that if we did not, if we didn't have an ordinance, taking care of them, then just offering...
Think you'll operate any of that?
Yeah.
Alright, now, do we have an operating one in the city now?
No.
We have none now?
No.
So we don't have...
Not a pawnbroker. I mean, he buys and sells gold, but he does not loan money on it.
So the vote here today is just to approve?
No, no. We've, it's, it's the Commissioner of Banks informing us that they approved our ordinance and that they approved our interest rate.
Now, is that ordinance coming up for another vote after we accept these?
No, we passed it already. We passed it last session.
Those are real important pieces of our legislature.
I think I might respond to that, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to send a letter of thanks to the city clerk for the hard work that he did. Thank you.
Okay, what do we have? What's going on there? Counsel or Hanlon?
I just, Ms. Chairman, I just want to make a comment on this, and I know that it's passed, and it passed last year, and there's nothing we can do about it, but I just want to point out that an interest rate of more than 36% a year is a lot of interest rate on any item. Matter of fact, it'd probably be around 40% when you add interest on interest. That's a big, big rate, and I'm amazed that the banks would approve that kind of a letter, but so be it.
Dear, if I may, what happens is it's usually short-term loan, and we're one of the lowest. Yeah, we took the lowest one we could find.
Absolutely crazy.
Not to hurt the consumer.
Let's get on with business here.
Item number 12A, independent audit reports distributed to city council members and clerk committee in the mailboxes. That's item number 12A.
No, we're gonna take these all as one vote?
Yeah.
Well, I see one's going to a different area. So let's take item number 12A, when we accept the communication, place on file? So moved?
12B. Item number 12B, FY 2015 budget package received from city audit for legislative department completed. Department budgets due back to director in the late and Thursday, April 24th at 12 noon.
Who did that? No.
No?
Communication.
Accept the communication, place on file?
Motion made to accept the communication and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All three of these pieces have been accepted and placed on file. Be correct here. Okay.
Item number 15 is resolution sponsored by Counsel Rosa DeFlorio, Legislative Affairs and Elections Committee report on rules be established on appropriate distribution of city council fence for city official city business by city councils, with a recommendation for favorable action on proposed new rule 80, expense of city council members reimbursement.
Mr. President, I would like to make a... A motion on section B, definition of B, on item one, section D, to strike out 25 and replace with 50. Second.
Motion made and second to, what was the proper words?
Strike out $25.
Yeah, I understand that part, but what's the...
And replace with $50.
What number was that? 1D, 1...
It's 1D.
1D? Motion made second to change, amend 1D to read 50 instead of 25. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Favor...
So...
Favorable recommendation as amended.
Ms. Chairman, this is, excuse me, Ms. Chairman, this, this is item 15 we're on, right?
Yes, it is.
Oh, you said 12B or something?
No, that was part of the... But I said 12, 12B.
12B, I mean, 15, okay.
So it's 15 here, but we, we just voted to amend?
Yeah.
From 25 to 50 on 1D, and now you vote?
Favorable action on the order as amended.
Motion made second to...
50 to 25?
Each member shall be entitled to $50 monthly reimbursement. Use personal phone lines and personal official rules.
Well, we had, took the vote.
I'm questioning whether that vote actually passed. As, it was a voice vote, it wasn't...
Okay, the one we...
So I'm asking for a roll call.
Roll call vote.
On the amendment, substituting, amending section 1D by striking out $25 and inserting 50. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
No.
Counsel Sichetta?
No.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Six yeas, four nays, Mr. President.
Members pass.
Favorable action on the order as amended.
Motion made, favorable action as amended. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Counsel McGonigal?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
No.
Counsel Sani?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Eight yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
I make a motion to file for reconsideration.
Second.
Motion made.
Move, I'm sorry.
Motion made to move for reconsideration.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani? Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
No.
Seven yeas, I'm sorry, three yeas, seven nays.
Reconsideration, that motion made for reconsideration has failed.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to move for reconsideration, item number 19, please, in hopes that it fails.
And hope that, motion made to move for reconsideration on item number... Motion made second, the move to reconsideration on item 19.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel Polatano?
No.
Counsel Sichetta?
No.
Counsel Sani?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
Counsel Marquez?
No.
One yay, nine nays.
Reconsideration has failed, item 19.
Mr. Chairman, on item 16, waive the reading and grant further time?
On number 16?
16. Second motion. Grant further time.
Motion to accept the city report and grant further time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk read item 17.
Item 17, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, Government Operations Public Safety and Service Committee, that the company that is in changing water meters provide a statement about homeowners' business and signing, but cannot get a copy of it at the time, with recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Second, accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor.
Second.
Motion made second to accept the committee report and refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And refer back to sponsor. Clerk read item 18.
Item number 18, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Ray Polatano, Committee on Government Operations, Public Safety and Service, that the Everett Police increased patrols around the school street, municipal parking lot in the weekends due to noise complaints from the neighboring residents, with recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Accept the communication, place on file, and refer back to sponsor.
Motion made to accept the communication and refer back to sponsor, place on file. All in favor?[1402.34]
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Item number twenty-two, resolution sponsored by Counsel Stevens, Simonelli, and John Leo McKinnon, to director city services, Jason McCott, supervisor in charge installing the new water meters and radio frequency devices, Mr. Peter Barasmi, and the acting director of the board of health ministers, Alva Cruz Davis, appear to the next government operations public safety and service committee relative to explaining the new water meter radio, radio frequency devices, purpose, safety, and health issues.
Refer to government operations?
On the, on the, on the, uh, motion, on the...
Just refer to, go to a...
On the resolution, I'd like to speak on it.
Sure.
Uh, I just think it's something new, and we're not looking for a witch hunt here, but the idea is there's pros and cons about what this meter does. It's actually on the outside of your houses, and it controls your water meter, but there's certain things about it. This should, people should be aware of what's going on out there about this thing. I'm not looking for the, I'm just looking for the answers for the people make out, make their own decisions on this thing. I've got the pros and cons about this, and I think it's, it's be very, very well to people watch it and find out, and then if it gets to a point where we can make it into a public hearing, that's where it's gonna go. But we'll refer it to, uh, thank you. We'll refer it to our government operations and public safety.
And invite, and...
Invite, um, yeah.
Do whatever you have here.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
So motion made, second to, um, send us to the...
Government operations, public safety.
The government offices and, uh, government operations and public safety. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? It's been sent to the, uh, committee.
Um, item number twenty-one, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, relative to explaining the fifty thousand dollars earmarked to do over the snack, check, bathroom, sack, back.
Uh, Counsel McKinnon?
Yeah, basically, we, we got sort of an update from them, from, uh, Mr. Erickson. Uh, I would like to extend us out two more months, uh, and then have him reappear in two more months with an update.
Motion made to, uh, motion made...
Whether it be in writing or... Himself.
Second to that.
Mm-hmm.
Motion made to lay this on the table for two months and to invite Mr. McCott, I believe?
Uh, Erickson.
Uh, Mr. Erickson, uh, before us to explain, uh, what's going on down there. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Twenty-four, I got.
What we have here?
Uh...
Item number twenty-four is regus, resolution sponsored by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, police chief, respectfully step up police patrols at Glendale Square, Walgreens, and all parks in a summer month.
Counsel McKinnon?
I spoke to the chief at the last, uh, public safety hearing meeting. Uh, he said that it is in, uh, full motion now that they will be stepping up, uh, patrols. They will be beefing up, uh, certain areas, so, uh, I'm gonna refer this to the police chief.
Refer to the police chief?
Second.
Yes. Motion made, second to refer this back to, uh, the Everett chief of police. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Item number twenty-six, resolution sponsored by Counsel Peter Ray, DeFlorio, Fred Capone,
Richard DeLaSola, John Hanlon, Michael Marquez, Joseph McGonigal, John Leo McKinnon, Salvatore Sichetta, Stevens Simonelli, Rosa DeFlorio, Cynthia Sani. Oh, that's it. That the City of Everett had a one-to-one-and-a-half-foot high stone base to raise the original nine-eleven memorial beside the Powell Library to improve visibility, and that the original nine-eleven memorial be rededicated this September after the plaque has been repaired.
Uh, Counsel DeFlorio?
Thank you. Um, I've spoken with the mayor's chief of staff. Uh, the plaque on the original monument will be repaired as soon as the weather is getting a little bit warmer. Uh, as many of you have known, we've tried to, been working to get this repaired for a number of years. Uh, this, this repair is coming about through donations that came from a number of Everett residents, including a large number of members of the Trentini family. Uh, what we're looking to do is looking to add a foot and a foot, a one-foot to one-and-a-half-foot base to raise the stone up, to improve the visibility on it, and give it the proper stature the, uh, that it deserves. Right on the plaque, it states that, you know, uh, that as history, some, these events should never be forgotten. Well, this plaque should never be forgotten. It came up at a time just after the nine-eleven incident, so we'd like to get it, get it, uh, like the repair done, get it, uh, raised up for better visibility, and rededicate it this September. I would like to thank members of the city council for supporting me on this, so I'd like to refer this to, uh, the mayor's office and the director of community development.
Motion made, second to refer this to the mayor's department, to the director of community development. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor?
No.
No.
[laughing]